We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Before I do a roll call, I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate the South Fayette Girls Basketball Team for winning the State 5A Championship. And I also wanted to take the time to recognize the South Fayette High School Competitive Cheer Team who won number one in WPIL, number two in the state, and number three in the world. I was out of 98 teams. So congratulations to both of those organizations. Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hondrew. Commissioner Orvis. Commissioner Postudka.
Here.
Commissioner Lozini.
Here.
Commissioner Schre.
Would everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, a hundred and fifty, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Our first order of business, number four, is recognition of Eagle Scout Nicholas God. John, if you want to mention Nicholas, if we'd like to come up, we'd like to present you with a congratulatory award.
Nicholas, thanks for coming. We appreciate it. I know you did a lot of hard work to achieve this honor. We'd love for you to tell us about your project and where it is and what drove you to seek it out.
Yeah, so my project, I built an instrument holder and installed it in the South Fayette Middle School. It's for their ukuleles. They kind of just had them all in a box originally, and they were scattered throughout the floor. And I was talking to the middle school music teacher, because he's also the jazz band director at the high school. And I asked him if he had any projects that he might need done, and he said, well, I have a bunch of ukuleles that are lying around if you can find a way to store them. And so I planned out the project, got all the measurements, and built it at the middle school. And I wasn't allowed to install it for safety reasons, but I have pictures if you want to see it, too.
Yeah, that'd be great. Absolutely. Yeah. Can you play a ukulele?
Not really well. I play sax.
There you go. We've got a sax player right there.
Challenge accepted. How many ukuleles can hold?
Twenty-five, I think.
Well, I can tell you when I went to South Fayette, there was no ukuleles. I don't know that we could spell ukulele, and I still might not be able to spell ukulele.
The middle school in the last four years has gotten a lot of advancements in their music program.
Yeah. That's awesome. Come on up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's for you. Want to come on up and we'll get a photo?
Thank you.
Great work.
Appreciate it.
All right, with the movie shirts.
Congratulations.
A lot of tall people. One, two, three, ukuleles.
Thanks. Great job, Nick.
Congratulations.
All right, moving on to item five, public comment. At this point, we'll take comments from the public on any agenda item that they may Item six, correspondence, 6A South Fayette Library Report. I didn't steal your thunder, did I? Okay.
I was just going to mention, which thank you for doing so, that it is National Library Week. So this is sort of the compliment to September when we do Love Your Library Month. Love Your Library Month is really focused on the fundraising efforts that we do. National Library Week is really more of an opportunity just to promote the role that libraries play in our community and what we offer to this community of South Fayette. So we've been putting out some special things on social media. We have some displays and things at the library as well as treat bags for all the patrons coming in this week. So if you're out and about and would like to stop at the library, we would welcome a visit. I also just wanted to mention, too, in the last month, we've had two big events down at Miller's Run. In mid-March, we had our inaugural Friends of the Library Used Book Sale. We haven't had one since about 2015. These were all new volunteers. They were really ambitious and wanted to take this on. So we had a really great response, both in terms of our sales as well as attendance. And then this past Saturday, we had a local author fair. We had 16 local authors down in the senior center. Thank you to Paula and John for helping us make a last-minute shift, but it all worked out for the best. So we're really maximizing the space down there and what we're able to do down there. So just thank you for your continued support with our current endeavors and as we look to expand our footprint more permanently. Thanks.
Got Mark on the Libby app, too. So I got you on the Libby app this weekend. There you go. 6B, Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department Report.
I don't see any representative from Oak Ridge or South Ridge for that matter, but we did receive both their reports. They're there if anyone would like to take a look at them. We also received a thank you letter from Cameron Hondrew for our donation to the Minithon.
Item seven, consent calendar items, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Hold on a second. All in favor? Aye. B, payment of bills. You want to review any of those?
Give you a quick rundown of the top five. Our monthly health insurance bill. On the police side, our subscription to CODI, which is a software that helps them record-keeping for arrests and whatnot. Our engineering costs related to our paving program, a service call for HVAC to the building, and a payment to our youth tennis adult pickleball instructor. So those are the top five for the month.
MEIT, that was a, that's for benefits, right? It was $100,000?
Correct. That's health insurance.
Okay. Can I have a motion for payment of bills?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. 7C, financial reports.
Yeah, the budget, the actual reports there, it actually shows information through the quarter. I know that later in the agenda, we're going to advertise a workshop meeting where we'll take a deeper dive into the first quarter financials. Looking at the first quarter, you know, about, again, our real estate taxes isn't coming in yet to the extent we really needed to to support our monthly expenses. So we have a deficit at this point of about $1 million, according to the report. We're hopeful that that turns around. I know that bills were mailed out. Our collections to date are lagging a little compared to last year at the end of the quarter. So it's worth monitoring. We hope it corrects itself.
Hey, John, really quick, but the collections aren't due, because this is a report for the end of March. So technically, they're not due. So we should see like a catch-up.
Yeah.
And at the end, like next month, once we get through April.
We should. I mean, the only red flag I would say is we're at 121,000 in revenue. End of the first quarter last year, we were over 300. So it probably will balance out, but you know, this time of year, we're keeping an eye on it. We're circling it, making sure that we're aware of when deposits are being made. When that catch-up starts, we'll certainly offline report to you guys that it's happening.
So it's even? Okay, but do we know why? Is it just because people maybe owe more and then they're just like waiting? You know, tax day is not until April 15th. People still have, you know, six more days? Or is it just maybe they're mailing them in and they're not being processed?
Well, to get the discount, they would have had it paid by, yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking regular tax day.
No, we're not right, yeah.
Okay.
All right, are we done with financials?
I am, unless there's questions.
I do not. Does anyone have any questions? I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Bank account balances.
The balances are there for transparency's sake, you know, kind of tying with the discussion or the general fund is, you know, getting low. So this is the time of year where we're, you know, looking forward to more revenues coming in. But our balances are there. You can see the impact fee has a healthy amount in it. Other accounts are listed as well.
Do we have another payment that we're going to be making into that capital reserve sometime this year?
We will, yeah, for sure. We also identified in our CIP that we use the bond funds for a lot of our capital projects that qualify.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve bank balances?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Item liaison reports. I'll go ahead and start with public safety. Kind of a lighter month. We had four fire departments work with Allegheny County Fire Academy and an instructor from CCAC. We did three days of forcible entry at the Oak Ridge Fire Department. And that's all that I had to report. I know that the Fire Safety Advisory Committee did have a meeting last week. I was out of town, and I believe they're going to be present at our next budget meeting. So going on to public infrastructure and service. Finance Administration, Liam.
So I wasn't able to join the Shake Hog meeting, but Tim, I think you had a chance. Did you have a chance to attend in my absence?
It was a Teams meeting virtually. It was very exciting.
Okay, so nothing further to report.
Nothing further to report, yeah. Speaking, Mr. Postudka, in your governmental relations.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Hondrew.
I was out last month. I would just mention that the new signs look very nice around.
Nice job.
In terms of the community, nice job. Thank you.
Item nine, older unfinished business.
I don't think we have any.
Nothing? We moved to 10. 10A, discuss and consider S-02-2025 McMillan Subdivision Plan Number One, preliminary and final minor subdivision application, 804 Station Street, zoned R4. And this was already approved by planning.
That's correct. I'll jump into that check. The Planning Commission recommended approval at the March 27th meeting. We have reviewed the plan. The applicant and their consultant responded to our comment letter, revised the plan accordingly. They've addressed all of our comments. They've also addressed the one comment they had from Allegheny County. So all items have been taken care of, and we would recommend approval.
Any questions from the board?
No, I looked at it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I can make that motion.
Does anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Item 10B, discuss and consider withdrawal of CU-3-2024 Hickory Grade Road Residential Development Conditional Use Application for Parcels 323-F-1, 323-B-10, and 323-B-9 that was zoned R2. And this is a request to withdraw that application.
Right. We received the request in writing, so we just want to make it formal by having you guys acknowledge that that request was made and authorize the request to withdraw.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the withdrawal of that development conditional use application?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item 10C, discuss and consider a reduction of bond for N-Tech Stonegate Phase One and Two. Reduction for Phase One of $47,211.78, leaving a balance of $156,467.52. And the reduction of Phase Two in the amount of $58,451.58, leaving a balance of $76,314.37.
We've reviewed the requests. We feel verified what they're actually seeking here, and we agree with these numbers.
Someone like to make a motion to approve that bond reduction?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item 10D, discuss and consider a resolution for a grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority in amount of $500,000 for stormwater improvements.
Yeah, I'll just do something brief, Jason, and if I miss anything, feel free to fill it in. But we had shared with the board a pollutant reduction plan that Gibson Thomas had put together that calls out a number of stormwater improvements, retrofits, adjustments to stormwater facilities in the township. This is a funding source that could offset some of those costs. So we're seeking out that grant. The application's due at the end of this month and requires a resolution.
Resolution. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for the resolution for the grant?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10E, discuss and consider a resolution designating May 14th a Praxia Awareness Day. This is something that we do annually.
We have, right. This is, I think, third year we've done this.
Right. So May 14th, that's our next meeting?
May 14th is a national day.
Oh, okay.
So we recognize it this month, or we ask you to designate it this month so that we can put it out in our implications and stuff before you.
Would someone like to make a motion to consider that resolution designating May 14th a Praxia Awareness Day?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. 10F, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for a workshop for Monday, April 28th at 6:00 PM. This would be our standing workshop along with the first quarter financials for FY26.
Quarterly financials, we also wanted to build off of the February discussion we had with the board in terms of like an annual work plan and benchmarking where we are against this.
Would someone like to make a motion to consider that adaptation? All right, Tim, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Discuss and consider a motion to approve settlement with SAI Ventures LLC regarding the assessment for property at 3 Nicholson Drive. So I read through this in advance. I'd like a little further clarification on this as well. Is this, this is one with the school district? There was some type of settlement? So can you?
Yeah, this was an update regarding, it was an office warehouse commercial building owned by SAI Ventures LLC. The owner initiated an appeal before the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Reviews. It was currently assessed at $655,500. The last time that it was sold, it sold for $875 in December of 2020. Currently, an issue is the years 22, 23 to 25. The school districts typically take the lead in these kinds of negotiations because they're more skin in the game.
More skin in the game.
Yeah, exactly. And so a settlement was proposed. The assessed value of the property would be reduced then to, from the $655,500 to the $480,000.
That was a very good negotiation.
So it implies, though, a fair market value of $754, $716 for 2023, a fair market value of $80, $733 in 2024, and $910 in 815. And that's based on that common level ratio. So because these values exceed the fair market value of $640,109, the property owner was trying to justify using the financial data and comparable sales.
So the actual settlement will land at $754 for '23, $880 for '773, and $910? Or is it going to be assessed at $480,000?
It's going to be assessed at the $480, but it implies using that common level ratio issue, formula, that puts the fair market values, which is what it would be purchased for.
What is that ratio?
You know, I do not know the details.
You know, off the top of your head, it was actually lowered. I think at one point, the CLR with the county, was it like 85, and then a judge knocked it down to like 60 something?
Yeah.
52?
And that's why you're seeing a lot of these appeals throughout Allegheny County because and people, and people winning.
So based on this, we really don't have any kind of option.
And like I said, usually the school district, since they get more out of it, they usually take the lead on these, and we usually.
This could hurt us in future.
It's similar to what's happening everywhere, yeah. It's, you know, you're getting less money in because more people are taking appeals because their fair market value is affected by this common level ratio calculation.
Well, based on that, does anyone want to make a motion to approve this? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. I'm going to say no.
No?
Yeah. We'll still get three to one. Just want to have a no.
I don't agree with us.
Becky, you voting?
Yes.
H, discuss and consider a motion to approve tax refunds from Kevin Byber. I think I looked at this, there was like five for maybe $1,000 bucks in total.
About $1,300.
Yeah. And I guess this is also as a result of this common level ratio issue?
I would imagine these are based on appeals.
I have a question, though. So when you go through this and we, like, it gets through and it's approved, but isn't there still an opportunity for the school board to then challenge it and it goes back to the original assessed value?
I, you know, I know that the school district has the ability to challenge just about any time. I mean, I'm of the opinion, these come to us after they have, they've gone through that process.
Typically, it's the county, the local, and then the school board all sits in on these appeals. And basically, they're basically all agreed to at that point in time, and then refunds are issued based upon that.
So this is essentially just to pay the refunds?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Someone give me a motion to consider approving to pay the refunds from Kevin Byber?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Department reports.
Before we, yeah, before we get into manager's report, I would ask for the solicitor's help in just amending the agenda. We have a resolution we need to add. It's for a grant, the application to DCNR. So it's not Paula's fault. She submitted this stuff to us, just kind of got lost in the shuffle, so to speak. But the same way, we have a resolution for the CFA grant that we spoke about. This is a DCNR grant that we're looking to apply for that requires a resolution as well. Sorry.
So what we would need is a motion to amend the agenda first to include a motion to approve the resolution that John described.
Right. All right. Would someone please give me a motion to amend the agenda to include a resolution for a grant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Paula, would you mind if you have the details in terms of the amount of the grant and the source, the project?
Yes. The grant is for a trailhead across from OTB. So we got the funding for the trails through Fairview and then kind of that gravel lot directly across. We put in paving, small pavilion, restrooms. I believe it's for $340,000. It's a matching grant, so the project would be around $600,000. And we.
It's DCED?
This is DCNR.
DCNR, okay.
Are they going to put a bridge over Chartiers Street there?
So I also have a grant in that was submitted back in November with the county for the design work and to do that. So Gibson Thomas will have to work with PennDOT since the PennDOT work. Yeah, so the grant is in for the design cost and the coordination cost.
It would be a new bridge? There's a bridge there. This would just be like pedestrian access.
I always see people walking from St. Clair to go down to OTB, or going across the road.
Yeah.
And I'm like, that's not safe.
Yeah.
So we would want to do a crosswalk from the trailhead that I'm talking about to OTB, and then whatever pedestrian improvements PennDOT would allow us to do on, over to. Our goal is to connect Fairview Park with Voice May View Park. It is our goal. Yep.
So we'll make this item I, and I would ask for a motion to approve a resolution to apply for a grant for the trailhead, DCNR grant, DCNR grant of $340,000. Is that acceptable? Yep.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, now we'll go on to 11A, manager's report.
And my apologies for not getting a written report. It's been a tough week, so we'll do it orally this month. It'll be the last time. But obviously, the, you know, the fire in the building, we did have a fire in our building last Monday evening, electrical panel in the basement, good amount of smoke in the building. You know, we had a great response from our fire departments, and we thought we had a really good jump on getting things repaired. We had our electrician actually here that same evening. We had a crew lined up to start the next day. They did start the next day. We had a disaster mitigation team that was working on smoke damage in the police side immediately. So we were doing a lot of good things. It got complicated by some water infiltration during the repairs that caused us to kind of change our approach to the remedy. So we ended up having to just set the conduits at a higher elevation to get them out of the water level and improve some drainage out front. But power was restored just today at 1:00. Downstairs remained fully functional. They were serviced by generator power. Upstairs, the generators power the emergency lighting only and the front doors. So we weren't able to turn on the computer. For the most part, email held up and the phones worked until we had to have Comcast help us relocate their line, so it was down for a time period yesterday, but fully back and running. Do have claims into our insurance companies. Keep everyone posted on that. But everyone really did come together, you know, and work through this. Vitaly Dan in Public Works worked hard to help us out. Joe Hollywood was, you know, very good. And, you know, I joked with him. I said, thank God we hired you because I'd have to have to pay you for every hour you were here. So it was, it was good to see everyone come together. So quick update on the 515 Millers Run. We are looking to have a kickoff meeting in the coming weeks. We've developed a survey with our consultants, go for stakeholders, and hope to have a conceptual design presented to the board within six weeks. So stay tuned for that stuff. As Commissioner Hondrew mentioned, welcome signs have been installed by the Public Works Department. Thank you, guys, for that. It's been a long time coming. Those things were actually here for over five years, maybe even closer to seven years. So glad to get those in the ground. Really happy to see that. Just a quick update. The Southwest Tax Collection Committee is a group that we're members of. They are comprised of municipalities in the region that vote on a collector for earned income tax, right? So Jordan Tax had been that contractor. Their contract had expired, so there was an RFP. They were just awarded the contract again. So our, no change in our EIT collection, but just wanted to report that that group did meet and approved Jordan Tax for another two-year term.
Great. Thank you, John. 11B, Pat?
Thank you, commissioners. Just touch on, I'm sorry, this is so small this month. There's a lot going on. The three things I'd like to touch on is 578 Millers Run Road. That's the house on Millers Run Road that is blighted and obviously needs to come down. We were able to get hold of the owner, and the owner was actually able to come down and physically shut the property all up. So, because we threatened him if he wasn't going to do that, we were going to take action and lean the property on his behalf and get our money either way. So he voluntarily did that. We have a court date that was actually postponed. The owner requested a postponement. So as soon as that's rescheduled, I'll be going with code enforcement officer Canaski down to the local magistrate. Because this owner is highly litigious, I have no doubt that we'll probably end up back in front of Common Police Court for another occasion about this property. So we'll need to prepare for that and prepare to all of our documentation to make sure we can clearly explain why this property needs to be demolished. Also worked with the code enforcement, our solicitor on 7047. Also worked with the Code Enforcement, our solicitor on seventy forty, seven four five Dutch Hill Road, uh, that's the one, we're working on getting a consent decree from the owner so that we can get that one demolished. And then looking at one forty-five Morgan Street, which is blighted and needs to be demolished, we do have a document signed, um, but obviously that was never filed with the courts, and that's one of the prerequisites for a consent decree to get the filed with the courts, so we need to go back through the process to get that all done, and hopefully we can, once we get that all done, we can get that one taken down as well, so.
You have the one on Cam, and I think it's on Campbell Street, National Hill, is that still on your list? We had, um.
That's the one with the roof and the windows and the whole nine.
No, National Hill, I think this was the one where the, um.
Somebody had come in.
Yeah, Mrs. Capeness from National Hill, it was a neighbor of hers, the gentleman that lived there had passed away.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like two or three years ago at this point.
I'll check into that one, I'll check for an update.
Yeah, and I think the bottom is Allegheny, I think the top is Campbell, right?
Yeah.
It was up on Campbell, it's like maybe halfway through.
Yeah, these were the three that seemed to probably bubble to the top for this month, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because of the conditions, obviously, they're in, so.
I know, and we understand and are learning that you just don't go knock houses down, that it.
There's a process.
There's a process.
But the good news is, we did get our money from the county, for the last one, we did knock down for the Act one fifty-two funds.
I did see that.
We were reimbursed for that fully, so that's the good news, so.
Yeah.
If you have any other questions, I'll entertain any other questions.
No, I looked over your report, the questions I jotted down were regarding the, uh, the blighted property, so thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome. Yeah, thanks for doing that, because, you know, in terms of taxpayers are, are, you know, it's on Facebook and they're mentioning it, and they, they, they really want them down pretty bad, so.
I want them too.
Yeah, I know, stare at them every day, the main road.
All right, item eleven C, building permits.
Yeah, a slow month, uh, particularly on the commercial side, I think if you look at the activity, just a few signed permits on the commercial side of things. Residential permits, uh, we're really close to being in line with last month, but we're, we're trailing behind twenty-four. Um, not sure if those are market conditions or what the, what the reason is, but we'll continue to monitor and, and share with you guys. We do have, you know, some projects in the queue that might, might kick that back up, but, um, that's where we are for the first quarter.
Thank you. Item D, communication and community development. Andrea?
Thank you, Andrea Iglar, Director of Communications and Community Development. We have been advertising the First Homeowner Association Leadership Forum, as of last week, we have eleven HOAs participating. We don't really know how many total HOAs we have, we have more than forty planned communities, some of them have HOAs, some don't, so it should be interesting to see where we land. We're continuing to, um, advertise this so we can get as many associations involved as possible. Um, and the, uh, spring magazine that's coming out at the end of this month, I will focus on HOAs with an advertisement for this, um, event, uh, with some Q and A on HOAs, a feature on Hastings, who's, um, just moving from developer run to resident run, so, um, that's really been a focus, um, this quarter, is getting set up for the Homeowner Association meeting. And I want to point out that May third, um, is the TV and electronics recycling, and also, uh, yard and leaf, leaf waste pickup, so that's going to be a big spring cleaning day. And also, um, Saturday, April twenty-seventh, there's a paper shredding at The Guardian, um, on the other side of Bridgeville, I think it's still Collier there, the one that's close by, um, and South Bay residents are welcome to participate in that also. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Down by Mo's.
Down by Mo's, yes.
There you go.
Yeah, so you can stop and get lunch too.
There you go. Welcome to Mo's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering report?
Good evening, Commissioners, Jason Polovich with Gibson Thomas Engineering. I'll go through some of the highlights of, uh, our report. Uh, as I noted last month, the twenty twenty-five paving contract, uh, you'd previously awarded that to Shields Paving. We've had a pre-construction meeting with them, uh, they intend to move into South Bay hopefully by the end of May, is, is the schedule we're looking at there. Uh, they'll need about a month and a half or so to, to complete that project, um, so as that schedule gets, uh, firmed up, we'll, we'll share that with the township so they can post that. Uh, the M S four program, as, as we noted previously, uh, we are submitting a grant for three pollutant reduction projects, uh, that would go towards that program, uh, tho, those would be about an eighty-five percent grants, fifteen percent township match on that program. Uh, moving down the reports to Mohawk Road, uh, Koski Contracting started that, uh, project in March, uh, so they are, um, looking to get that done in the next couple of months so that we can get that paved as part of this year's paving program. Bridge and structural, uh, we're hoping on some good news here shortly on some grant awards that we have in for a few structures, uh, and I would expect, uh, by next month's meeting that, uh, I'll, I'll have that news for you. We have a number of developer-related projects, uh, as, as John had mentioned or alluded to with, uh, building permits, Stone Gates, uh, phases one and two is, is largely built out. The developer has approached the township regarding phases three, four, and five, which were previously approved, so they're going to start working on developers' agreement with that, and we would expect to, uh, have them break ground later, uh, later this fall at, at the latest, if they can't get it in the summer. Clean Express is under construction, sure.
Real quick, Jason, remind me, how many homes were planned for Stone Gate? If you don't know, it's fine, I'm just curious.
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but three, four, and five, I want to say, and don't quote me, has about another eighty homes in those three phases, they're all single family.
I would guess there's three hundred homes in that, in that total, maybe more, yeah.
Yeah, I would think, I think, I think it's two something with, with the entirety of it. Uh, the Apex Development is, is been under construction, um, the developer recently worked with the Solicitor and Township staff to split that developers' agreement, so that process was concluded a few weeks ago. And beyond that, we've, uh, actually, things are somewhat quiet in the planning commission front, we don't have anything scheduled for this month's planning commission meeting, um, and the McMillian plan was, was previously approved tonight. If anyone has any further questions, I can.
On the Apex, I know that we always heard that there was dirt and water and all that other stuff, is now with them being built, is it getting better?
Yeah, things have definitely improved with that, and I think once we've kind of got through the sloppier times here too, it's been, been much more improved on the roadway there.
I'm just glad we don't have to be about it.
Do they still have a, do they still have a phase that's going to go across the street?
They do.
And what's that, what's the timeframe on that one? Ballpark? Is that they're gonna?
You know, we, we haven't, uh, they haven't come in with a building permit on that side, um, so it, I would hope by the end of this year that, that they would be in the door for that one, but I, and I, I think that may be part of the reason why they split this, I don't know.
That's why, that was the genesis of my question, I didn't know if there was a reason that development agreement was split.
I'm not aware of when they're looking to break ground there.
Okay. It's fine by me.
All right, Jason, I was gonna ask you real quick, any updates on, I've heard some things down in Newbury Market, there's some slowdown with the D E P, EPA on a potential wetlands.
Yeah, we did, we've met with, uh, the consultants, not particularly on that one, but it's the same consultant that, that's represented a number of those projects, they recently met with the D E P, there were some wetlands that popped up from when that project was originally investigated, um, it, no one thinks it's going to be a long-term type of issue that's going to jeopardize the project or anything along those lines, uh, the way they reported it to us is, you know, it's going to set them back a few months, but not at all jeopardize the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the good news.
Parks and Rec. Shelley's looks at me like I'm gonna forget her.
It's happened a few times, so, uh, good evening, um, so update on our ballfields, we still don't have our N P D S permit, they're asking for more comments, uh, Jason's team's hopefully getting in by the end of the week, but then we hopefully have a permit in the next couple of weeks, um, I was hoping construction would be done.
Done? Oh, wow.
Well, at least the majority of it, to avoid the summer months, so we're unfortunately going to be going to the summer months, um, we didn't want to have kind of that in the splash pad at the same time, but it looks like there'll be dust everywhere, so.
Great. Um.
Good water.
Um, uh, been working with O I T, um, we can say that all our parks are officially on camera, so we got Boys Home up, uh, the cameras physically are on the restrooms, um, overlooks the, um, playground, pavilion, parking lot, and the field, um, and then Preservation also has cameras on the restrooms, which have amazing zoom cameras, so we'll be able to see all the fields on camera and the parking lot. The only other park we don't have on camera yet, I think, is Treveskin and Sturgeon, um, but we got additional cameras also at Morgan, uh, especially a camera kind of on the concession stand door, um, especially because they have money and stuff in there, and, um, they're adding a few more at Fairview, um, once we, um, get some answers from West Penn, we also are going to be putting a camera at the entrance of Fairview off of Mayview Road, so then both entrances will be on camera, and we can see all cars coming in and out of the park at all times. Um, um, Joe's been very busy with some other matters, so, um, yeah. Um, we, I have, we officially, um, sent out, um, offers to our summer camp counselors and our park attendants, um, we'll be hiring four park attendants, um, about, I think, five camp counselors are coming back, hiring two new ones. Um, we're, I'm currently, um, creating policies and procedures for the park attendant and concession stand, um, that we'll have them to train our staff and to be there, um, you know, on hand for them. Um, we're going to train and C P R, um, all the, uh, park attendant and camp counselors. Um, I've been working on the D C N R grant for, uh, the trailhead, um, down on Mayview, um, some new programs, um, which we're real excited about, we're starting a new chess program, which has been very popular and it's great for like the teenagers, which was an age that was really hard for us to find programming for, so we're really excited about that. Um, we have the Easter egg hunt coming up next, next Thursday, um, is sold out, and we are looking for volunteers, if anyone wants to volunteer. Um, then the last week of April is Earth Cleanup Week, um, where residents can come and pick up supplies here at the Township Building, that they can clean up kind of their neighborhood or, um, any streets, and then we, they can arrange with us for Public Works to go pick up the garbage bags. Um, that is all I have, any questions?
Well, yeah, just a real quick question, I think we talked about this before, I just want to confirm, the concession stand that we're going to have for the splash pad is cashless?
That's what we're going to try at first.
Okay.
Yes.
And I have a quick one.
Yes.
The ballfield is Hunting Ridge.
Yes.
Is that?
That's Hunting Ridge's.
It's Hunting Ridge, um, we, uh, we did get permission from their H O A to use the, the grass part for lacrosse, so lacrosse is kind of using like the outfield of that ballfield, um, and we agreed that if we did any damages that we would fix it, um, and we also placed a porridge on there, um, because lacrosse is actively using that for practice, but it's not our field.
What's the, what's your, what's the timeframe on the Fairview ones that were turfed?
Uh, it's looking pretty good, they have stayed off it, they have, um, they have their first home game in Fairview today, um, on D, so the middle field, um, I, Vitaly may be able to speak a little better, I went there, it looked pretty green, um, but it's been kind of wet, so.
Yeah, there's a whole lot, whole lot of water, that could be very green, but very muddy.
Yes, yes, so no definite answer on that, on that field.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks. I know the chief's not here, uh, John, do you have his police report?
I do, he asked me just to, uh, make sure I mentioned the March twenty-ninth, um, peaceful demonstration, he didn't want me to say protest at the, uh.
Okay.
At the Tesla dealership, but, uh, there were about a hundred, uh, protesters, but no incident, you know, they had a good operational plan, they had some cooperation from some surrounding departments and no issues, uh, to report.
Okay, very good. Uh, Public Works report?
Good evening, Commissioners, Vitaly, uh, Public Works, uh, page forty, forty-one, and forty-two, Andrea, please. Completed training, uh, we, uh, Public Works completed training, uh, dog, dog bites, dog and dog bites on March twenty-fifth, also we completed, um, technical training, uh, cost-saving payment, um, was hosted by, uh, Penn Dot and L TAP, it's free, free training. In the March highlights for the projects, I, I forgot to include, um, street, uh, street sweeping, street sweeping programs underway, uh, paving and patching, uh, guys continue, uh, to work on a seasonal rising, eliminating, and filling up, uh, all soft spots, Storm Sewer Project, um, Public Works installed approximately eight hundred, bring a bench train, um, at, uh, Hickory Great Road, that's a, over the New Fifty Bridge, over that way. Uh, special projects, um, we worked, uh, worked and installed, uh, gutter system at the Morgan Park Pavilion, to, uh, to improve the structure and the water flow, the special project, uh, South Fed sign installation, uh, ten, ten signs were installed, you know, throughout, throughout the township to provide the clear navigation for visitors and instill sense of pride amongst the residents. Strategic, uh, placement of the signs and shorts that are highly visible and accessible, promoting welcoming environment across the area. Uh, that's all I have for Public Works, and I will be.
Looks good to me.
Yep, thanks, Vitaly.
Thanks, Vitaly.
Appreciate it.
Uh, request tracker?
Uh, the request tracker looks pretty similar to previous months, um, about fifteen or sixteen trash and recycling, um, things, some, some lights out and some property maintenance, um, no, nothing too oddball that jumps off the table, um, but it's listed there, if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I submitted a written report and circulated it, as usual, fortunately, because I'm so far at the end, almost everything that I've been working on has been discussed already, mostly I've been working with Jason and Gary on development stuff, there's a few other things that I'm working with John on, um, that are moving along, I don't have any, none of them are presenting any unusual or, I think, difficult issues, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to address that, otherwise, that's all I have.